Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, July 23. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Present.
Commissioner Hull? Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent, so you have a quorum.
Right, thank you. So we'll start with any public comments on matters not on the agenda. There have two gentlemen in the room. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can we please have the director's report?
Thank you. We posted the latest draft of the housing element online yesterday so that we could turn it into the state for an additional review in a week. And this will probably be the version that you're going to be looking at in August. And we're trying to schedule the meeting for August 20th, but I can't confirm if we have the larger room at Redwood until Thursday. So I'll know more on Thursday. If it'll be on the 20th or probably 27th, I hope. The room's available one of those two nights. So if you could start taking a look and if anyone wants a hard copy of the document, it's really long, I'm happy to print it out so you can make notes in it. Just let me know.
Great, thank you. So we have two items on the public agenda tonight. My fellow Commissioner Brock Wagstaff will be recusing himself. So we're going to move up the approval of the minutes. So if we can do that now. And then should we bring up planning commissioners' reports as well? And we can do that. So does anyone have any comments? Or otherwise we'll have a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Do you want to have a roll call, please? Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. And Commissioner Swisher is absent.
Right, thank you. And then maybe we jump into planning commissioners' reports as well. Do we have anything? Everyone's here for the next meeting.
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Nothing, great. All right, thank you. In that case, we'll go backwards now. We'll open the public portion of the hearing tonight. And I'll pass it over to you.
And I will recuse myself.
Great, thank you. So the first item on the agenda. Oh, I might just add that Commissioner Wagstaff is recusing himself because of where he lives in the neighborhood. So, yeah. Is the pump station at 90 Diane Lane in Hedwood Park, APN 2211007. Could we please have the staff report?
Just give me just a moment to pull up the presentation. And then Julian Skinner, Public Works Director, will be starting us off here.
Good evening. So the item before you tonight has looks like three actions that are required of you. One is design review and then a variance for setback and then a use permit. The project is the Heatherwood Pump Station. This is a combined pump station that dates back to when the city ran the sanitary sewer system in Larkspur. This building houses pumps for both the sanitary sewer and the storm drains, which is the where the rainwater on the street and the gutters goes. So both the, some years ago, the city sold the sanitary sewer to Ross Valley Sanitaries. So they operate the sanitary sewer. The city still operates the storm drains. This building is kind of a leftover from when we owned both. And so both the sanitary sewer and the storm, the city storm drain are in the same building. Both the sewer district and the city's pumps are getting old and they frequently need repaired and they don't meet current codes. And so we have both identified in our capital programs that we needed to rebuild, replace this pump station. And so we work together with RVSD and we're looking at a joint project where we will both upgrade our facilities. And we will separate them so that they don't interfere with one another. And it does not require, it's a very, it's a pretty small pump station in the grand scheme of things compared to the others. It doesn't need a building and it's actually easier for operations if things are outside and not enclosed. So the plan is to demolish completely everything that's there, the building, the equipment, the pumps, the wet wells. And we're going to separate the two facilities, still pretty much within the footprint of the old building. And then we'll have a sanitary sewer system on one side and the storm drain system on the other side. We can skip to the next slide here. That's a view from the street of the existing pump station building. It's right at the corner of Diane Lane. And it's on a parcel that actually also includes Heatherwood Park. It's an odd shaped parcel. But the main building you're looking at, a CMU building here in the foreground. And then as you veer off to the left, there's a pathway that makes its way over to Meadowwood and also to Heatherwood Park. And then you can kind of see the orange barricades there. We also have a public sandbag station there on the same parcel. Let's skip to the next slide. This is the site plan, so we're looking from the top now. This is kind of the layout. The new layout is actually, some of the equipment will be elevated. So even though we're not putting it in a building, the ground elevation here is about elevation four. The requirement to be out of the 100 year FEMA flood is elevation 10. So we actually have to raise all of this equipment up six feet from the ground in this location. So we're planning to build like a elevated concrete pad that would be up six feet roughly in the air. And then the equipment that's sensitive to water. So all the electrical components, the generators would all be placed on top of that pad. And then the wet wells and most of what happens in the pump station is underground. That's where all the pipes are. That's all access from the ground, from the pavement. So it's just the electrical components that will be up on this pad. The pumps and everything are actually down in the ground in the wet wells. The next slide is a bit of a blow up. So this focus is mainly on the building. So the kind of the dotted blue area here is the footprint of the old building. And so what we're proposing here is the western, we would build a new platform on kind of the western half of where the existing building is. This pushes it a little bit further back into the side, a little less visible from the street. There is a pretty significant sized tree that's out by the driveway that kind of masks what happens beyond this point. So we've pushed the pump station back here. We can't move it too far back. There's a lot of utilities in addition to our storm drain and the sewer pipes. There's gas and water that goes through here. So we're very limited on where we can actually go. But we did try to tuck the building to the west side. And so the beige hatch here is the area that the new platform would be. And it extends a little bit further to the west of where the existing is, but it doesn't touch the existing kind of eastern half of the building. So smaller footprint for the actual structure. And again, that's because we only need to put the electrical components up on the pad. The other things that are within the building now are just going to be out and they're going to be flush with the parking asphalt. Next. This is an elevation. So this is looking from the street. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the elevations that we're looking at. The bottom one is the 4.2, that's roughly what the ground elevation is there. The blue hatch box is roughly what the, what you would see of the existing building now. So it goes up to roughly, it's about 10 foot tall, about elevation 14, too. The pedestal that we're going to build to put the equipment on is six feet. So that's at about 10.3. So it's about four feet lower than the roof of the existing building. And then all the equipment would sit on this 10.3 elevation slab. There's some control panels. And then the generators would sit on top of that. We had originally proposed a railing the whole way around this platform. We need it for fall protection because people will be up there servicing the equipment. We don't want them falling off the platform. But then we started to talk somewhat about how everything's outdoor now as opposed to in the building and it might be a nuisance for an attractive nuisance. And so we started talking about putting a fence up instead of the railing and putting the slats in the fence like as a privacy so that people wouldn't necessarily be able to see flashing lights and things up there that might make them want to jump up and, and, and see what's, what's going on. So we've proposed, we looked at about a four foot or a three and a half foot fence that would mimic the same height. Excuse me, that would actually match the, the height of the existing building. But for security reasons, we feel it's better to put a six foot high fence up on top. It'll just lessen the chances of somebody feels they could get up and over it. And it also serves better at the higher elevation to mask some of the equipment that's on there. A lot of electrical cabinets and, and, and things like that. The, the generators will stick up from there another foot or so. So if you're looking at the elevations, 10.3, so we're about six feet up to where the slab would be. And then another six feet to the top of the fence we would put. And then about another foot on top of that, you would see the top of two of the generators. You know, this is not a perspective view. So this is at your, if you're at eye level, if you're back at the street, I don't exactly know how that perspective would work, but it's within a foot of the, the top of the fence. There are a couple of other components that will extend further. The, the generators need an exhaust on them. So there will be some stacks that will go up about another five or six feet. That's a code required clearance for those. And then we are proposing a couple of task lights that will be on the, the platform. And those are, will only be turned on if somebody's up there working. There'll be on a switch and the switch will only be accessible from inside the platform. So these won't be on every night or they're not there for security. They're, they're just there for task lighting if they have to go and service the pump station in, in the night. And then the next. So this is my super crude attempt to overlay the skeleton of the platform on the existing building. So if you look at the left, again, the new platform will take up about the western half of the existing building. It won't touch the, the eastern will be demolished. So the door is about six foot six high there on the structure. So the, the platform that we're going to build will be almost up to the top of the existing door. That's that first horizontal line there or the middle horizontal line. And then you would have the fence above that. And then you would maybe see the top of the generator sticking out above that. So that's kind of an overview of the project. And I'll, I think I'll switch it off to Alex at this point to talk through the details.
Sure, yeah, I just have a couple other additional slides here. And it's mainly covers the public comment that we've received on this. There were two comments that were received after the staff report was sent out, both from people who reside in the neighborhood. The first stating that they were in general support of the project and the decreased rear setback, in which the variance is to go from, I think it's a little over five foot rear setback to three feet. And just for clarity, the rear yard we're talking about is the property line that borders the high school properties. They said they were in general support and wanted to see the plans. I did forward them the plans so they are aware. And then the second comment is actually from the owner of 88 Diane, which is the home directly adjacent to the pump house, the pump station, excuse me. And they said they were happy to have the station replaced. They did have some concerns mainly about utility vehicle parking, the slats in the fencing so that people don't climb up on it. More landscaping features to screen the view. And then they wanted the sandbag area moved from its proposed location to, I think, where it currently exists or in that, on that side of the structure. And then the last one that I failed to get on here on time, they did have a comment about the, the noise generated from the generators. Those are the only two written comments we had received. And so with the staff recommendations that the commission review the provided materials, discuss and render a decision subject to conditions of approval, findings and a class two CEQA exemption. If you do want to approve the project tonight, I do have one small ask and that would be to modify or add a condition of approval that the fencing on the site meets the requirements of the municipal code. One of the things we noticed in the 11th hour is that there's an on-ground fence, not the one that he mentioned up on the platform that's proposed to be eight feet tall. And I, you're probably aware at this point that it's six feet or seven feet, if you can agree with the neighbors. We just want that to be added or be noted in the conditions if you do choose to move forward. That concludes my portion of the presentation. And the presentation in general, we're both available for questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skinner and Alex. It's, I'm assuming it's just a tour of few that's presenting on this, there's no one else, right? It's just a tour of you, right? So, okay. So I guess we'll see if we have any comments or questions before we discuss.
Yeah, I, I guess I have a couple of questions and just trying to, to visualize. You know, I loved, I loved your little sketch outline. Cause I was trying to figure out, okay, if the generators are on top, there's currently a generator on the side closest to 88. Who's got questions? And then, so what happens to that space there? Does that, that's won't be used? Will that become like paved parking? Will that?
Yeah, so there's, there somewhat, some of it will be parking, but there's also some of the equipment that I mentioned that won't be up on the platform, but is underground. The access to some of those is in that area over there. So there's going to be large vaults in, in the pavement that'll be there that'll have a hatch cover so people can get to the pumps if they need to. Also, we've looked at, due to the site constraints, moving the sandbag station that's on the west side of the building. That means people have to drive further in and on that multi-use path that goes to the park. We've looked at, we think it's more convenient for the public if it's on the east side of the building where the generator is now. And we're talking with our maintenance department because we did get a question as whether anybody actually uses that and if we need to include it in the, in the plan. So we'll work through that, but we may end up with a smaller footprint sandbag station there. But yeah, the, the plan now is to, that the vehicles would, we'd have room for vehicles to park over on that east side of the building so that they don't have to park over the pathway that goes to the park where they sometimes have to now. We'd like to keep them on that side. There will be times however, because there's equipment on the west side where they mean, may need to pull a truck right up over the path because they have to pull a pump with a winch that's on a truck out of there. But for the most part, we're going to encourage parking on that, on that east side where the generator is.
Oh, I had a couple of questions. Do you mind putting up the diagram where you, you drew in the, in red? What the, the new platform's going to look like? I just want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at. And then while we're waiting for that, and you said in your, in the report, there were going to be two trees taken out. Can you show us which two trees? Cause I saw two big, like an, and like an oak tree. And I don't know what the other one was on the other side.
Yeah, they're, they're in the back, you know? It's not the, it's not, it's not the big one that's out front. I don't know if they show up on this plan or not.
When I took a picture, I don't know if you can.
Let me all pull up a different view that I should have it.
So, so can you identify which two? Cause there was an oak tree at the back. Is that the one that you're taking out? Or was it the little one at the front where the land exists? Cause there were like four planter boxes at the front. And one of them had a tree in it.
Yeah, there are some very small trees in the planter boxes that are proposed for removal. Let me.
But there's a big oak tree. When you walk down the path that goes into Redwood High, on the left, there's a, one largish oak tree. And then on the other side. Can't identify that tree. Can you, that has the yellow?
So there's this tree at the rear, here at the rear corner. And then there's the tree between, next to the existing generator. So it's right here.
Wait, what are we looking at? So that's the, the, on the Diane roadside, Diane Lane side.
Yeah, this is right in front of the chain link fence portion of the structure.
Okay.
And then there's this one at the rear up here. And that's the, the bigger of the trees.
Oh, and the other tree is the little one at the front?
These, those are the small little trees and when the land, the planter boxes are being removed.
And then what was the, you said, but the two big trees are which ones? That one down the, on the far?
This, this tree.
Yeah.
And then you have this two inch diameter tree.
Oh, so that's the smaller one. Must be that one. So the oak tree at the back actually is not, that's going to stay in place.
There's the, the larger of the two trees at the rear. There's, there's, the larger tree is behind the side with the generator and the chain link. And that one is proposed to remain.
Okay. And then do you have any kind of, other than what you drew in? Do you have anything that shows what it will actually look like? Actually, Alex, can you leave that diagram up?
Sure, I was going to go to the, the, would you, do you want to go to the fence?
I wanted to wonder had he had the red, the red diagram. So Mr. Skinner, do you have any final, anything that will, what it shows, what it will look like right at the end, other than, other than the one you showed us today?
No, this is the, so that one, that, that's the engineering drawing that's in the plans that would go out to bid. I've added color and numbers to it.
Yeah.
But that's the only elevation that we have at the moment.
Can you go to the next one? That one there? So the, the strips at the top, that's what the wooded slatted fence that's going to go all the way around. And that's going to be six feet.
Yes.
And then there's going to be some generators sticking up at the top. So there's like metal things that are going to be sticking out from the top of that.
Yeah, that's like this little horizontal line that I drew above where the slats are.
Right.
Indicates roughly the size of what one of those generators would be. The other one is further back and you probably would not see it behind the tree that's there.
And then the bottom section underneath the?
Yes.
What is that going to look like?
It's just concrete at the moment.
So it's just gray concrete?
Yes.
And, but there's going to be a staircase that's going to come out from there, right?
Yeah, I didn't draw the staircase. The staircase is going to be on the back corner. We're out, just put the cursor, yeah.
Okay, so you can, so when you're driving and you see the staircase going down. Okay. And then how do you stop people from just going up the staircase or going under the staircase?
That's where the, the fence is that Alex mentioned before. The fence that's on the ground is to protect people from gaining access to the staircase.
Got it. So there's a staircase, there's a fence at the, on the ground level and there's a second fence on the top level.
Yeah, so the fence on the ground level only goes around the staircase. It doesn't go around the main platform of the building. It starts there and it comes out and it follows the fence. And then it ninety's back and goes to the rear property line.
Okay. And then where you've taken the building down there on the right, where the existing pathway is that goes to Redwood High? That's just going to be flat land? And what are you doing? You're concreting that or you, is it going to be earth or what's that?
It'll be asphalt. And in some places there will be access hatch covers to get to the equipment that's going to be underground. And then?
Is that flat or do people just step on it and walk?
No, it's flat.
It's flat?
Yeah, it's flush with, it's flush with the ground. It'll be, it'll be up like an inch or two, just so the general rainwater doesn't get in the cover. But it's essentially, it's flush, it's not.
Got it.
On a pedestal.
Okay. And how long is this all going to take?
The whole project, hopefully will take, the, the guts of it, getting it ready will take about six months and then finishing everything off, it'll probably take about a year start to finish.
Okay. And then right now, there's some, actually quite nice landscaping in the planter boxes. Are you going to be able to replace that or do some kind of landscaping?
Yeah, so we haven't specified the landscaping yet, but the plans show that we're putting landscape strips back in front of the concrete pad. So the intent is to come back when it's finished and put some landscaping in to screen that raw concrete.
Because I saw a comment in the staff report that there wasn't any funding for landscaping.
There wasn't originally, but the costs on this project have gotten pretty high. And so given the overall budget, I think we can find a way.
Find it.
Some minor landscaping in.
Okay. And then I was going to have you address the comments in the one letter unless you have any questions which we might go to first.
Mine was mostly related to this, to the comments in that letter. I mean, I think like overall, the, the project is needed. So I don't really have any objections to it overall, but some of the minor items that were, that were brought up. I mean, the thing that I noticed out there was, was the orange K rails for the sandbag areas. Seems like those would be nicer if they were like a concrete K rail instead. Like I think they've got those over at Piper Park for the sandbag area. So I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know if that's an option, but just it might blend in a little bit better, I guess.
Yeah, so the orange K rail, the reason we left it that way was because we weren't sure if we were going to keep the sandbag station or not. So to be honest, we didn't put a whole lot of time into the sandbag station part of it. But I think we've had a conversation internally. And if we decide that we do need the sandbag station there, we'll do something other than the orange K rails. Either a small wooden retaining wall or a small concrete retaining wall. Yeah.
Yeah, and just following on from that, I mean, what it, it looks really messy right now when you go there and my, my, I couldn't keep my children from climbing all over it. I mean, it's, it's a sand pit, right?
The sandbag station, yeah, that, that happens.
So I just, yeah, I mean, if you end up keeping it, and it seems like it's something that may be needed. To be honest, I didn't know that's what it was until the, this meeting today. I had no idea that's where we, the public could go and get sandbags or fill up for sand. So it might be worth putting that somewhere, publicizing it. But if we keep that, I mean, is there a budget to, as you described, to enclose it, put it in a wooden box or do something which, it looks a little more attractive than it is now?
Yeah, I think if we decide that it's needed and we work it into the plan, we'll figure out a way to make it fit on the site. I mean, the, obviously the orange K rails were put up there as a, as often happens, a temporary interim measure. And that turned into however many years it's, it's, it's been there. So yeah, I think it makes sense to, if we want to keep it there to, to formalize it.
I think that would be great, so. Sorry, you had your comments and you were?
No, that was, I think going through, hearing public comments and going through the?
The letter?
The letter, that, that would make sense to me.
You may have already addressed some of the comments in the letter. But Alex, do you mind bringing up those comments? So it sounds like we need, we need a fence height exception. Is that what you were, in fact, you were referring to for the eight foot fence?
So we didn't notice a fence height exception with this, so. Yeah, you could do a condition of approval to reduce the height and make it comply with the, what's stated in the municipal code. If the project were to get, you know, continued, we could re-notice it with that. And then the comments from the letter or the utility vehicle parking, which I believe was addressed, including slats in the fencing, landscaping features, moving the sandbag area and how it will be retained. And then the, oh, the noise from the generator.
Yeah, so there will, there's currently only one generator at the site. It's outside, it's not in the building. The proposed project will have a separate generator, one for the sanitary district and one for the storm drain system. And if, they will be, will obviously be much newer generators, newer technology, much quieter. They come with a sound attenuation. And so it will be quieter. It'll actually be the person that wrote the letter, the generators will be further away from their home too. They're rated at 72 decibels if you're standing right at the generator. But 50 feet away, which is the property line. The specification requires 55 decibels, which is equivalent to a casual conversation or a car driving by. So yeah, the new generator will be much quieter than the existing.
Great, thank you.
What about the vandalism concerns that the letter writer had?
Yeah, so typically if we have a retaining wall or exposed concrete that's vertical that we think may be subject to tagging, there's one of two different methods of graffiti proofing it, which we may work into the contract or we may do with our? We may work into the contract or we may do with our own crews. Um, one of them is a lot more expensive, but you only put it on once and then it makes the graffiti easier to clean off. The other is cheaper and it's sacrificial, uh which means you have to reapply it every time you you clean it off. So usually we kind of see if it's gonna be a recurring issue and decide which way we wanna go. Um, and then obviously if we do put some landscaping in front that uh covers that area. Um, the hope would be that it would make it less of a a target for for tagging.
And then one other just general concern is, it sounds like there's gonna be these vaults that are currently. Covered and they're in the building and they're gonna, so are they susceptible to vandalism?
Um, they're not dissimilar to um how we have manholes out in the street. Um, these ones actually have special locks that you can't just break into, you need a special gun to 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 open them. And they're heavy rated checker plate for a loaded semi truck to go over, so they're pretty robust. Um, you know, will will they get tagged? I I don't know, but I. Other other than that, I I don't have any concern about vandalism.
Okay. All right, do any more questions? In that case, shall we open it up to the public? Uh, for any comments? Thank you, and if you could state your name when you come up, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ed Tishburn and I live in Heatherwood Gardens. And um I and many of our neighbors pass by this location daily. You know, it is kind of a little pedestrian hub. Um, people, students uh go past the station. Um, out the fields for the track and field at the uh west side of the track. And um the baseball field there as well. And then there's um also Heatherwood Park, and so a lot of people and their children uh come into the park adjacent to the station. And uh trucks come in there to service the trash cans, the uh. The 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 trash company comes in and they have a bollard. And then they come in on the asphalt and uh maintain the park's trash cans. So I just wanted to mention, I I don't know if you could um put back on the screen here that elevation that you had with the drawing. This one or? Yeah, thank you, that's great. Um, I just think that uh, you know, there's probably they're probably doing, you know, excellent job with the mechanicals on this and so forth, and sure it's very challenging. But if you just look at this picture and kind of, you know, think that this is the entry to the park, the entry to the school that's facing. The neighborhood, you know, through uh Midway and Diane Lane. And, you know, if you just kind of look at this area and this area, you know, it's very utilitarian, you know. And so it's not really super uh park-like, you know, comfortable. That you look at the kind of greenery here, here and here, and then imagine it kind of looked a little bit more like that across there. I think it would have a more pleasant entry experience um as people walk past the station. I think if the station wasn't so close to uh the park and, you know, so many people and their view. You know, maybe you wouldn't really need landscaping, but in this case it is. And I was looking at the plan and it looked like there was an allocation for a two-foot landscape strip on note. Uh, I think it was a note thirteen and fourteen or so for a two-foot landscape, um decomposed granite and an edge. But I think that would be challenging to make that. Two-foot strip have very much impact visually on this facade to the neighborhood and the people walking by. Currently, these planters are at least five feet wide and they extend the full length and beyond the building. But, you know, there is a grate here that they catch water, so it's not there. And then the door, the access in, so that's all, you know, reasonable. But I just think it's an opportunity to, uh if if it can fit, you know, maybe moves. Uh, maybe you don't need to move anything, but I guess that as a question, that's their challenge, you know, to um. Can these planters be larger, wider? Because these are five feet, they're being reduced to two feet. And uh. The ones being currently shown, I mean, maybe they're temporary, but they're being currently shown as built with a class two aggregate base. And if you have a foundation from the structure and you only have two feet of planting. Um, you know, do you really have enough fertile root zone to put a plant in there? Maybe creeping big on a concrete wall, you know, Boston ivy. Star jasmine, but the thing is, um. That making it green also might help the tagging be less, you know, so yeah, you might need a little tiny bit of maintenance. Try to keep it low maintenance of greenery. Okay, but you know, you're also gonna have a taggy, uh so. Uh, that's what I would ask the the uh members to consider, consider, can you kind of make this soft from um? Because there it's L-shaped in plan view, the new uh structure. And with a two-foot strip here and two-foot strip back here, but no strip here. So as you walk out from the park, you know, you're looking at it and I don't think there's any uh buffering, green buffering or vegetation. On that side. Um, the structure is higher and that maybe necessary for the community's benefit. But it's, you know, a concern, it's it's higher, there's lights up there. You know, I don't think that looks uh as park-like, that's more urban, you know, more urban and more infrastructure. Um. You know, I think it's a good, well, I guess I'd just like to bring up the idea, maybe there's green screens, you know, things you can put on concrete walls on on. Uh, and fences that can actually be a trellis for for vines that that could grow up there. Or it could just be green or, you know, I don't know, I just think also maybe it might be above our budget if you get creative. But, you know, if you go to the Young Museum or something, sometimes just the material across the front of it, that fence, um you know, they have the kind of copper. You know, these planters, maybe if they were raised, because these ones are raised at like a bench height. So you have to decide whether you wanna encourage people to sit there or not as they come out here and into the park. But it but that also creates more fertile zone for the plants to grow. Um, you know, consider it's probably gonna be a foundation under there and compacted material. So it might make sense to have like, you know, like a quartet steel, long plant or something, it wouldn't be or or wood. Um, or something to, so I would like to mention that, that if um you could uh. Take the opportunity on this nice new project to also like an opportunity to also put to beautify that corner as well. And I know it's challenged, but maybe the vaults have to move underground a foot or two here, or two there to make room for these planters, uh maybe they don't. But um that's something that you can look in more detail.
Right.
That's my big challenge that I'd like to bring to you guys, and then also the noise, the decimals, you know, I hope this is a little quieter, I mean, you know, but. It's temporary only when it goes on, but the existing uh pumps and so forth are in a concrete. Masonry unit, so the noise, I guess, mostly kind of probably goes mostly up the top and out the sides. But, you know, now it's gonna be exposed and um, I don't know, in your studies, uh. You know, there's not gonna be any buff much buffering just from a a fence around it. And then I also like to ask the stairwell. Here, it sounds like you're gonna fence it with something maybe roughly like this. Um, around it, I think you were saying eight feet high instead of uh. Six feet high, I know, that's just something to think about, eight feet high, obviously probably deter people from getting in, but six feet might be adequate for. Just the kids walking around, but that that's a minor detail. So anyways, I just would like to, uh if you can look at the that fencing material in the the green buffering, so it has an aesthetic appeal. And make sure you have enough root zone for whatever that green buffer is gonna be, because it's re- currently reduced from two feet with class two aggregate. And not too many things growing to class two aggregate unless you scooped it out. Because you they they need friable soil that's gonna drain and breathe for any new plant material in there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We have any additional public comments?
Uh, my name is Brock Wagstaff, I live at sixty-six Diane Lane, um and I've been there for forty-four years, so. Um, I was there before the pump station came in and uh it can flood. I can, I can attest to that. It got up to almost to our driveway and we're pretty far away from there, so. I'm glad they're upgrading everything and um I I think it'll be. Uh, it'll be nice, I think what I my neighbor, my next door neighbor said. Um, is is uh something to to think about in terms of landscaping. Um, you know, some sort of plan around in front, maybe um textured concrete. Um, there's some beautiful ways of doing concrete that aren't just a flat wall of concrete, so. Um. I know uh you'll think about that and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just briefly, before we move on, I do wanna note for the record that we have a participant in the Zoom call raising their hand. Uh, unfortunately, we don't accept public comment via Zoom, should be in the notice that they received. Uh, they're more than welcome to submit a written comment and we can send that out.
Got it, thank you. Uh. Just a couple of questions on having heard the the comments, um and. Do do we have the budget then to do more with the landscaping? And with the the the, I guess, the concrete? And can you find the budget?
So we have within the contingency allowance room to do the landscaping and so. Um, we weren't sure what it was gonna be, so the plans basically have a placeholder and it's called a two-foot planter strip and it shows to be. Covered in class two A B. Obviously, if we're gonna plant it, we're not gonna put the class two rock in there, we'll prep it uh with what is needed for the for the planting. Um, and if it needs to be three feet for what we wanna plant, then we'll make it three feet. We, again, we do have some restrictions, but there's a lot of underground pipes there that we are not gonna be able to encroach into. Uh, but we'll make those planting strips as wide as they need to be uh to accommodate the plants we wanna put in there and we'll. Um, create them with the soil with the root depth that they need um with with that material. Um, once we start getting into like colored concrete and textured concrete. Then the costs start to go up quite a bit. Um, I think there may be some um. Texturing, some forms that we can put in that, you know, you see like a sometimes like a ribbed concrete. Um, that also deters graffiti, um that's not quite the smooth surface. So I think we can look into that a little bit, I just don't wanna promise that we'll be able to provide an architectural. Finish um on the building, but, you know, we can look into doing something that's other than just what would be smooth concrete. With the regular form boards, um that's a a minor uptick in cost. Um, to put like some sort of relief uh on that concrete.
Okay, and then the second question I had was, and I have no idea how this works in practice. But if you invited any form of like public art. Way, I don't know if the cost then falls onto you. The sanitary district or whether the public can pick up the cost of that, whether you. You know, invite someone coming to draw something, paint something that goes up on there. I don't know if that makes it more expensive, less expensive, but it could be an interesting feature, um.
Yeah, so at at the moment, how the costing works is there are components that are just for the sanitary district. For example, their pumps and their pipes. Uh, there are also some components that are just for the the city, we're paying each of those uh ourselves. Everything else that's common, like the pad, uh the concrete pad, the fencing that's common to the whole project, we're splitting uh fifty-fifty. So any of these enhancements that would be overall for the station, those costs would be technically will be split with the sanitary district. Um, I think um as far as public art goes. Um, as you may be aware, this question did come up recently when somebody wanted to do an art wrap on a traffic signal box downtown. And we realized we don't have a public art policy, so I think in the coming months we'll be going through that. Um, process, uh because right now we don't have a policy for uh public art. Um, but if we have that policy and there's an opportunity for it down the road, then we could revisit that. So while we're here today to get our approvals and we hope to go out to bid very soon, this construction won't start until next summer. Um, there's a very long lead time on some of the components and so. We would hope to have a contractor hired within three months and then we won't see them for six months. They'll be trying to procure the pumps and the control panels. Um, on all of the long lead items that are needed for this project and then it'll be next summer before they start construction. And then hopefully then get construction done next summer before the rainy season comes and everything's back on um online, so. Um, you know, some of these finish details, we still have some time, they're not gonna be shovels in the ground for for a while. So it's something we wanna revisit later after the council, if the council adopts a public art policy, then we come back then.
But at that point, you're not coming back to us, right? You're just gonna make those decisions internally, right?
I don't know that it, well, I think the public, it depends on how the public art policy gets set up and what the approval mechanism is is through that.
Right.
I think I heard a general desire to make it look a little more interesting, so uh we can see how far we can.
And I don't even know a public arts to answer here, I have no idea, it's just that it seems like you're offering up a big blank slate, so. Um. Landscaping sounds wonderful, that's just an alternative, I don't know what's what necessarily is the right answer. Um, okay, so shall we, let's have a little discussion if you wanna, would you like to go ahead and start? Unless we'll go down the line.
Um, yeah, one of the questions I had though is, you know, theoretically, landscaping wouldn't have to be decided right now. Right, I mean, what goes in, like?
Unless you make it a condition of approval.
More the construction, the concrete's more permanent, but the landscaping could evolve.
It could at least, right? But would we have to make it a condition of approval? Is that how that works? If we wanted, if we wanted to. Landscaping to be included, like. But that's your question, right, Tamara?
Yeah. Scaping and and that the landscaping returned for review.
Or could we just not have it as a condition of approval that landscaping has to be installed, like installed? Well, I guess we need to see it then is what you're suggesting.
Well, I mean, it's the city's project, so it makes a little bit different than typical projects. Um, and they, it sounds like the Public Works Director is indicating they will, they do wanna put landscaping in. You could make a condition that indicates like they make their best efforts to put in additional landscaping.
Oh, okay. So I did you?
Yeah, no, I've, um. That works for me. I guess my my thinking was it wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to make landscaping be a condition of approval. Today.
So when would we do that?
That's that's my question, I guess, really was, you know, would we have to even make landscaping something that came back to us? But it sounds like we would.
Yeah, otherwise it would be approved as proposed.
Without the landscaping or without any. Utification, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have another public comment?
Oh, Mr. Costa.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Um. I uh, I was the guy on the Zoom call and I couldn't talk, I had no idea. Uh, but I I saw, I heard everything, all the comments and everything on the on the project. Um, undergoing a project of my own right now, I'm concentrated on, it's, I couldn't really focus too much on here, but just a couple of comments. Um, I think one thing, I the uh. The high schoolers during lunchtime like to come out there and congregate. And uh if there's something we can do with the, just for them, you know. Not having areas that are that are hideouts where they can do whatever they do at lunchtime. You know, just kind of engineer, control that, sorry, I'm out of breath because I I ran down here. Relax, uh, but maybe maybe integrate that into the whole kind of scheme of landscaping. Not, you know, soon have hideaways kind of thing like that. Um, that purpose, the other is the graffiti. If the gra- the the way kids think is you need a mural, you need a slate. To uh graffiti upon. And if we can just take that away, which are trees growing along or plants growing along, like, sorry, I'm out of breath. Yeah, I might actually, can we take two for a second here? All right.
Dedicated, dedicated citizen.
Yeah, I I I mean, I. This all, I love it. Anyways.
You ran in flip flops.
But yeah, if there's like, if you don't present like open spaces for. If you don't present like open spaces for graffiti. And there's trees and plants and something to protect it, so it doesn't look so industrial. It, it won't, it, they won't draw to it, so I think anything to, so you don't have any faces. Of, of areas for them to tag. Number one, it's easy. That's to me, that's an easy one, like just, Ed, I think Ed, you brought it up that. You put greenery in front of the walls that are exposed and done deal. The other one is. Is the FEMA, if we did have a flood, I know the elevation for FEMA is ten feet. If there was a flood, will those generators keep spinning? Until you get down to whatever float level you're at. And they're going to hear the noise a lot. That's one thing. And then the other one is. P two, three fifty-eight or two fifty-eight in the FEMA code. You can't like below ten feet flood elevation, you cannot have. Mechanical equipment or if it's an, if it's an enclosed building where you, you don't have any subject to floodwaters. You can probably have mechanical equipment below. Elevation ten feet, but that's something to note that if we did get a flood. And it rose to ten feet per FEMA's governed. Base flood elevation, are we going to trigger any? Will there be any short circuits? Will there be failures, anything like that? Or is this an enclosed system where we're not going to have? Any of those kind of failures, so. Just something to bring up and think about during the course of design, that's all. And I apologize, I'm so out of breath.
Right.
But yeah, otherwise. That's all I had, just, just some comments to enhance the design and the. And the parents and the deterrence from the high schoolers or kids or whatever to. Find little hiding places around there and, you know, that kind of thing. So thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for running, for running down.
Yeah.
And adding your comments. Maybe we have Mr. Skinner just address, I'm assuming you've, you've already considered it being in closed system and if the flood does happen, it shouldn't. Short circuit, but maybe that's an assumption I shouldn't make.
No, so that, that is the reason why we have the platform and everything that is electrical is up above the ten feet. There are components that are below ten feet, but they're designed to be. The pumps are submersible and they're actually well below the ground and they're supposed to operate underwater. But the, all of the electronics that go from the pumps are all shielded per standard and all of the. Equipment that needs to be out of flood level is up on that pad. So, yeah, and then, yeah, everything should keep spinning even if this. This pump station, if we get a flood and the water gets up to elevation ten, this little pump station is not going to be able to do anything. About that, but it will, it will keep spinning. There are other pump stations. That are in town. This is, this is, these, our pump stations are for localized flooding from big storms. If we get an elevation ten storm. That's the bay and the creek and everything coming up. And that's not what this pump station.
Seems like if we get a flood elevation ten, the noise from the generator is probably going to be the least of the neighborhood's concerns.
But on, on the noise there, actually I had one additional comment I wanted to see if I could address was. When you did the comparison of the decibels from the old system and the new system. Did you take into account the fact that it was enclosed and now it's open?
So the, the old generator is not inside the building, the old generator, the one that's there now is outside of the building, so it's not enclosed. It's behind. It's behind the fence with the slats, but it's not inside the building. The other noise component that the person talked about, all the equipment that's in the building that's now going to be outside. Most of the noisy equipment is the pumps and they will be down in those chambers well below the ground and they'll be underwater, which also helps to. Attenuate the, the noise. So there's no noisy equipment. Up on the, the pad, other than the generators that are in the sound attenuating containers.
Right. Thanks for addressing that. All right, okay, we're bringing it back to the commission again. I think we just opened it back up to the public temporarily. Did you have any further comments you wanted to make? No? Okay. Yeah, would you want to?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the, the main concern and I guess my. Main concern too is, okay, so first of all, I, I think the, the project is, sounds like it's needed, upgrading infrastructure, I think is, is a great idea, so. I support the project. There's, sounds like there's some details. In terms of what the concrete face looks like, whether it's. Vegetated or has some sort of architectural finish. Or some public art on it. And. I'd like to see it, I think, one of those three. It sounds like we have money to do it, so. We, we should. I'm not sure what the best way to get that done is, if that's come back. To us once it's been finalized, if it's just a condition of approval that it has. We, we decide one tonight and it, it's a condition that it has vegetation. Or an architectural finish, but architectural finish is kind of vague.
Yeah.
Any finish could be.
And I'm not sure what did I answer on that, but when are you going to have a decision on the sandbag station, that area? Because I feel like that's part of the visual here.
Yeah, the sandbag probably. I mean, ideally within a couple of weeks. I'll have to talk to the maintenance superintendent and. He, he may end up wanting to canvas the, the neighborhood and get some public feedback as to whether folks use that. It is. Kind of our satellite sandbag station. Our main station is over at Piper Park. That's, it's bigger and it's way more accessible and there's a parking lot there. Most folks know about that one. I don't know how many people. Know about this one. So, you know, we may, we may want to. We may want to reach out and find out how many folks actually, actually use this one.
Because it seems like maybe there's a couple of open items here where. We could get an answer on that. We could get an answer on what they can do. Originally on the outside. And it sounds like if we can't put it as a condition of, a vague condition of approval, maybe it's best if it does come back. I hate to delay you further, but it sounds like you wouldn't be doing anything until the summer anyway, but.
Or is, would it be helpful to have them approve the project except for the landscaping in the sandbag area and have that just piece come back?
Yeah, that would be fine. And then what, you know, what we can do is, if we go out to bid, we can bid it with alternates and then I can know what. The different finishes on the concrete would cost. Then I would have a real number for them and then I can see if it fits our, our budget or not.
And then that would come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring back the finish and what we do with the. Sandbag station.
Finish or. Finish or planter situation, right? That's what.
Yeah, we're already committed to doing the adding, adding planting.
Got it.
Into the project. There will be planting, even if you were to approve the project tonight, as is and not condition it, we're going to put some sort of planting in those plant beds. This is. It's not that expensive in the grand scheme of things. It's like a four million dollar project, so we can spend some money to put, put the plants in. What I, what I don't really know is, is the, what the, what the options are for finishing the concrete. I know it. It can get, it can get expensive, so I don't, I don't have a, a take on what it would cost and whether I just would do the one wall or would it go the whole way around? I would need to get a sense of, of what those, what those costs were. As far as the sandbag station, yeah, we, it will, it will not be, if we decide we need the sandbag station, it won't just be the, the K rails. We'll build something similar to Piper, which is a wooden low retaining wall. Or because we're doing a lot of concrete work, we would just put a high concrete curb around it and, and formalize it.
Right.
Some of that.
See, I think it would be helpful to have that in writing, everything you just said about. Committing to the, the low wall, the wooden wall, if you're going to do the sandbag station, committing to. A, a minimum, a minimum level of, of landscaping. So you're suggesting that we can approve the project and leave two items of the project open?
Even to return with the details on the. Architectural finish, if any, and landscaping and sandbag station at a future meeting. It would work.
So what do you need from us tonight? You need an approval so that you can go out and bid for the project? Is that what you need or, or what do you?
Not necessarily to go out to bid, but if there were any. Big issues that you brought up that would change significantly the project, that I would have wanted to know before I go out to bid. Because to change those things after I've got a contractor gets very expensive. But if I don't have approval on the finish, then I'll work it in as a. An alternate when we go out to bid, so I'll at least get the pricing upfront. The, the concern is, if I have to do it later after I have a contractor, then it gets. Change orders get very expensive, so we'd like to know sooner rather than later, but given your feedback, I think I'm able to work those. As alternates into the bid fairly easily and it won't hold up me going out to bid.
Okay, and so it sounds like you then could come back at a later date for the approval. We don't actually have to give approval tonight then. If I'm hearing what you're saying.
If you, if you wanted to see it and give a final, yes, that looks good to what we're going to do, then yes, there's time to come back. I will have already bid the project, but I won't start up building it yet.
Okay. And then maybe we'd have more people on the commission.
Yeah, and we could add the fence issue?
And we can add in that, yeah, the fence height.
Reading is the fence height.
Do, do you want the, I mean, do you want an eight-foot fence there or do you want a six-foot fence, like?
They initially wanted eight because of staircase and they think it's going to be a bit of an attractive nuisance for people.
Ross Valley did?
Try, yeah, trying to get over.
Right, well, I was thinking about like, I was thinking more like getting under the fence, under the staircase. That seems like a nice little.
I think it may be closed. I think it may be concrete and it's closed off.
It, it is or it isn't?
I think so.
See, it'd be things like that. I mean, if, when I think about my kids.
They were steel.
They would love to go and hide under that staircase, so. It's things like that. And in fact, to one of the comments tonight about places to go and. Yeah, hide, right?
Yeah, so the fence is all the way down the ground, but it also is to stop people from climbing over, getting onto the stairs. Yeah, the stairs may, we may have actually gone back to steel stairs or I don't remember.
Yeah, it looks like a fiberglass.
Yeah.
Right, but it's this bit here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to all going to be fenced off by a six or eight foot fence, so. I mean. Kids getting in there under the stairs seems like the same risk as kids getting in this fenced off area that's. Close, you know, you can't see in it because it's obscured by a flat.
Okay. Okay, so how shall we, do we?
So you could continue, you can continue it.
And have, okay, do we need to make any form of motion to have?
Um, I'd make a motion to continue it to a date uncertain and then we'll just bring it back when we have more detail.
Okay, and, and you have enough information from us?
I do.
The clarity, okay. Great, which one of you like to?
Yeah, I moved to continue. Project number twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven. Until we get the additional information we requested.
And you.
I'll second, yeah.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher's absent and Commissioner. Wagstaff is recused. The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. So do we know when we're going to get this policy on public art?
Right, this morning they were saying it's tentatively, I think, scheduled for discussion in September, I believe.
By the city council?
City council, right. Yeah.
Oh, so soon.
Pretty soon.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda. It's a discussion of potential revisions to development regulations for lots in Heather Gardens. There's no number for this, it's just a discussion, right? Can we please have the staff report, Jackie?
Absolutely. So as you indicated, this is a discussion item. I don't have a visual presentation this evening, but I do have a, a little map that we'll look at together later. As you all recall, last month on June twenty-fifth. While I was bringing forward a project in the Heather Gardens neighborhood, we informally discussed bringing this. Matter, agendizing it and bringing it up for a formal discussion. So this evening we're discussing potential revisions to the development regulations for lots in Heather Gardens subdivisions. So the Heather Gardens neighborhood was subdivided in nineteen forty-two, which predated our current R one zoning codes. At that time. The subdivision allowed for a building line and that building line was set at fifteen feet for the subdivision. It's also in their covenants for the subdivision that they were required to have fifteen-foot front yard setbacks from the front property lines. So what we have in Heather Gardens are a, a couple of conditions where we've, most of the. Lots themselves and also the residences on those lots are non-conforming. So we've got the, the matter of the most homes being built to approximately fifteen-foot setbacks. Sometimes we find that they're really close to fifteen feet because they didn't have modern surveying technology, but. Really, really close to fifteen feet front yard setbacks. The lots themselves are considered substandard. The R one designations require a new single-family lot to be a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet. The average lot size in the Heather Gardens subdivision is five thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet. Some of them are as small as thirty-nine hundred square feet and some of them are up to twelve thousand. Those are just a couple outliers that are bigger lots. So most of them are, are really on. Quite a bit smaller than what our standard would be. Additionally, they are substandard in width. The R one regulations would require a new single-family lot to have an average width of. Sixty feet and most of the lots in Heather Gardens have an average. Width that is less than that, usually somewhere around fifty feet. And then finally, the. The last thing that, that we find in, in this neighborhood is that. Most of the existing residences do not provide adequate parking. Some of the, the homes, a lot of the original homes either have one small. Single car garage. Sometimes no garage and then they'll provide a tandem parking space in front. However, the code regulations state that a. Single parking stall is eighteen feet deep, so. Being that most of these homes only have this fifteen-foot front yard setback, this. Tandem parking space in the driveway often encroaches into the public right of way, so when someone comes forward with a project. We can't even technically count that as a, as a second parking space, so sometimes we're saying, oh, this is a, a lot with, you know. One cover parking space and a second one that is there, but doesn't meet the code requirements, so. Anytime we have new construction or significant remodels that are triggering the. Need to comply with the current R one regulations, we're seeing a lot of requests for variances, which you all know, we see a lot of requests for F A R exception permits here. Requests for parking variances to allow less than the required parking. Requests to. Either maintain existing non-conforming front yard setbacks. That happens in a case where people are doing. You know, remodeling and maybe they are. Demoing part of the house or most of the house, but they want to rebuild in the existing footprint or at least up to that. Front wall plane that's there today. And then. I say, and, and parking, I said parking as well. So the discussion today is just, do we want to codify this? And there are other instances in the city where this has been done in the past. Revere Circle has reduced front yard setbacks. That was done through a variance process for the entire subdivision some time ago. The same is true for, I believe it's the Hillview subdivision, so the subdivision on near North Magnolia with the, all of the college names, they also. And sometime in the sixties or seventies, and I can come back with the exact, if we want to move forward with this, went through variance process to allow. Reduced front yard setbacks in that subdivision, so whereas Heather Gardens, it's just recorded. In the subdivision, but does not have a variance that ever went through the planning commissioner, the city council, some other neighborhoods do have that. And since we are, these are coming forward. They are almost always granted. I, I don't think in my time here have I ever seen us say no to someone who's come forward asking for a parking variance in Heather Gardens. Just because if we were to require. Two-car driveway and, you know, two-car garage or one-car garage, it would really change the. The look and feel of the neighborhood character there, just really dominating these front. Front yards with lots of parking and things like that. So. Front yards with lots of parking and things like that. Um, so we are recommending um. That. The parking requirement be modified to only require the one covered parking space, um. And one tandem parking space for the Heather Garden subdivision, um. And that that tandem parking space be considered a compact space, so reducing the size of the. The guest parking, um that's tandem. In this neighborhood because it has uh this, and this may be something that we wanted to discuss for other neighborhoods that also have reduced front yard setbacks. Maybe if there's a variance that's gone through or there's something that's been codified for certain neighborhoods to have reduced front yard setbacks. Do we want to allow all of that second tandem parking spaces to be compact? So they're not always having to seek encroachment permits. That's something that you all can discuss and give us direction on, um. And then also hoping to discuss the the potential to codify. The reduced front yard setbacks for Heather Gardens, um to have all of the new homes that are coming forward, have a twenty foot front yard setback. Um, would obviously impact the residents that live there as far as how much. Backyard they would have, you know, if they're moving things back or are we going to end up in a situation where we've got homes that are staggered? Where some are five feet forward and five feet back, and that's out of line with the single family design guidelines, which does want us to have. A sort of unified um front yards and five feet is. Can be minor, maybe to the just standard look at something you may not even notice that, but those are things for you to discuss today. As well. Um, as far as the F A R exception goes, we are want to have a robust conversation about F A R exceptions. But that, in the staff's opinion, is something that needs to be done on a citywide basis, not just on a neighborhood basis, and I think. That if we open that can of worms today just for the subdivision, we need to be prepared to do so for. The rest of the the neighborhoods too, especially those. Places that have substandard lots or the hillsides, um so that's certainly a conversation that. We want to have in a discussion we want to have, but um perhaps might be better to come back and discuss that um on a citywide basis. Um, so with that, the recommendation today is to take public comments from interested parties, discuss the topics raised in the report. Uh, direct staff uh with some specific text amendments if deemed appropriate, and then we can come back and present.
Text.
Text for you.
Right.
And then I just do want to um quickly share, so we're all on the same page. Not this. These are the parcels in question. In the Heather Gardens neighborhood. And I also did attach to the staff report the um data of these, which has approximations of. The lot sizes and um the existing F A Rs, which just to further kind of validate. What what we know, that these are small, smaller lots compared to some other ones that we have, substandard as in terms of the R one zoning code. And that that concludes my my staff report.
Thank you very much, Jackie, and thank you for raising this as a subject for discussion. But do we have any comments from the public? Yes, thank you. If you would like to introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth Holder from Holder Parlette Architecture. Um, being a Larkspur resident who's been on both sides of this uh discussion, I've owned a home in Heather Gardens. Uh, and then, of course, I'm sort of being asked to help a lot of the families. I'm not, I don't have any projects currently in Heather Gardens. But I am curious the direction this would go. Uh, what I would, I guess I had more questions than anything. I was. Let's say when I did my home, the, you know, the the standard Larkspur. Two covered and two uncovered parking spaces is, of course, it's kind of absurd to have to then. And then I guess that's the point of this is that every resident in Heather Gardens has to come in and ask for a variance for something we all know is. Not really applicable, so having a uh an exception for that neighborhood makes sense. I would love to have just at least just sort of a study of just four basic scenarios I've. I've done over the years, uh I've noticed that, like you said, um. That uh there is the situation, say I had a home that was fifteen feet to the front yard, but we, I was allow, I. There the side, I was able to just barely make a twenty foot uh parking space right to the property line. I was wondering if there's any cases where the property line, the right of way is wide enough to where a parking space could be allowed. To encroach over the the property line. That's one. I I I mean, I I suppose that's one thing that should be discussed, but I was also thinking about just sort of characterizing. All right, when a new home comes in to just create a situation where you only have to say, I think you had mentioned two cars. A a covered parking and a tandem spot, there are some, you, there are some houses that might even be too lenient. It seems like you would have two surface parking spaces and one covered, so that that just wasn't clear to me. I don't know if I followed. That if we're talking about changing it to two off street parking spaces as part of this uh part of this change.
So are you, are you asking for clarification on what the staff is proposing?
Right, I would love to just know the, and and make sure it's uh inherently clear what staff is recommending.
Well, commission hasn't discussed yet, um but it sounds like what staff is proposing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is. Instead of the four parking spaces, it's just one covered. And then behind it would be one tandem, and that's it, right? And the tandem is not the standard. Size of the parking spot that is required on the the Larkspur ordinance, it's a compact size, which. It's a shorter distance, right? Is that correct? Yeah.
We're recommending a a nine by fifteen foot compact uh second, secondary tandem parking space.
Right.
Behind the uh required covered.
Does that answer your question?
It does to a certain, yes, absolutely. That part, I guess I didn't get a chance to read the full uh the staff report. I think that makes a lot of sense that, I mean, of course, I'm, I live. Over on Holcomb outside of this neighborhood, but it is, I my lot is just wide enough to do two side by side surface. Parking spaces, that makes a lot of sense, but as more and more homes say have cars with electric vehicles parked out front. I wonder if a if a compact space would be enough, that would, I I I don't know the answer to that, but. I know my neighbor has a Tesla and it looks much bigger than a compact, and he doesn't act, and almost no one in Heather Gardens parks. In their uh in their garage, I mean, I'm sure somebody does, but the, if you do allow a fifteen foot parking space. There are going to be cars, probably some of the larger vehicles would be hanging out. That would be my only, that'd be my concern, so. Thank you very much.
So just to clarify, are you saying that this is not a good idea then to remove parking spaces? Or you're saying it is a good idea? You you kind of gave arguments on both sides.
I am choosing not to have two, uh because I I I I mean, of course, both have benefits. Uh, I I really, I guess I'm just bringing up as questions. I don't really have a strong opinion on this either way, but I do have concerns. Knowing how many cars, people with electric cars, larger size parking, um but I've. I've and I've done several homes, both fifteen foot setbacks and then twenty foot variances. I've seen them both work. Honestly, I think the neighborhood would do better with deeper front yards, I just more green space. So I I guess I'm saying I have some concern, which seems odd from someone from the design professional who's always pushing for greater density, so. That's all.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question for staff on that. Right, um, is the sort of the impetus behind the. The compact versus regular parking space, is that just because we're sort of reconciling the fact that we're requiring a. Or we're only requiring a fifteen foot setback, and so the parking spot therefore should be fifteen feet deep. I mean, is that, is that really where that comes from?
Or is it because it's going into, it's pushing into the right of way and therefore you have to, this avoid gets gets the getting the encroachment permit?
It's both. Um, I mean, because the the fact of the matter is, is if something has a fifteen foot front yard setback, and then it's got a driveway. Within that fifteen feet, but then it also has right of way in front of that, which still. Is dri, their driveway, it's not out into the street, it's still their driveway, but if we have an eighteen foot. Requirement for a parking space and a fifteen foot requirement for the setback, it's, they're not congruent.
Yeah. We could look at it more carefully, but it does, this is one neighborhood where the front property lines are very far from the edge of the street. So they they in effect have the twenty feet, they just, but it, it's just not improved space, so.
Yeah, I remember on some of those, that some of the Heather Gardens projects that we've looked at, um they've been asking for a front yard variance, but when you go out there, it really doesn't.
Meets the twenty foot from the street edge, but I don't know if that's the key on all the streets.
Sure, yeah, or on every property.
Thank you. Yeah, I, yes, there's another comment, right, Mr. Wagstaff?
Uh, Brock Wagstaff, sixty six Diane Lane, um an old Heather gardener, um. Well, that that is the answer actually, is that the street right of ways, um I think were set up so you could have sidewalks. And that neighborhood never did sidewalks. So almost everybody um has at least twenty feet, usually more than that. Because the garages um on many of the houses are set back from the front of the house a as well, so. Uh, the front of the house is at fifteen feet, then the uh the garage is back another three feet or so. Speaking from my own house, um and uh on the other hand, um they're very tiny houses. They were built uh from what I understand for the ship workers and uh. At one time, Larkspur, I was sort of involved in this, um. Uh, was looking at the idea that they wouldn't allow second stories in Heather Gardens. They would keep small, a small housing stock. Um, but the the that horse had already left the barn because there were already multiple second stories, so it never happened. But um. Uh, many people have turned their garages into family rooms or bedrooms. Um, the reality is if somebody has one good off street parking spot, that may be it. And uh I would say two is a, asking for two is is uh adequate for that neighborhood. Um, and it's a wonderful neighborhood and uh everybody, we always have the, you know, I've done at least a dozen houses there. And almost everyone had exceptions or variances or uh having nothing to do with actually the architecture of the house. So um I think it's a great idea to modify it and maybe look at um other things relative to. Uh, areas of lots and F A R to later.
Thank you. I assume there's nobody on Zoom that's gonna run in. No, okay. All right, in that case, um let's discuss.
I I think this is a reasonable um idea, I think, you know. For me, especially as somebody who wasn't familiar with Heather Gardens, and then we had that project, you know, a few weeks ago.
Mm hmm.
Um, that I think brought this forward. I started looking at Heather Gardens and noticing, you know, that they can only park on one side of the street. On all the streets and and, you know, they don't have the sidewalks and the houses are generally tiny. Um, and there are lots are really tiny, uh that it makes sense to me that we would. Have this set up so that it is something that staff would, you know, we would create the variances or the, I guess, the exceptions in. In the code so that these homes wouldn't have to come to us for that. They would come to us for all the other things, and I don't know that I would want to open up the F A R can of worms. Um, but I do think the the parking and the fifteen foot setback should be things that we. Codify.
And pre-approved, you're saying, okay, okay, thank you. What about you? What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I I pretty much agree. I commend uh our staff members for bringing this up. Because it's uh one of those things where I think it makes makes us all more efficient. Um, you know, we we see these a lot, we see, we've had a quite a few projects come by and Heather Gardens in my. Time on the planning commission and um, you know, we're we're looking at the front yard setback and it's. How how we look at it or how I look at it is, you know, it's it's in line with what's already there and it, you know, I'm not. Uh, I I don't think it's it's quite fair to to say deny a project because it's got a fifteen foot setback. Uh, which doesn't meet the R one zoning district, but is the same as the rest of the neighborhood, so I I agree. I think it's, I think it makes sense to. Um, to change the 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 rules for that neighborhood, um because. It seems like people are coming before the planning com- commission unnecessarily. Um, when, you know, we, we haven't, I, to my knowledge, denied one. Up to this, you know, yet, and so, um. You know, I don't see that changing for what's proposed here, I guess, so. That's my two cents.
That was my initial thought when I first came in was, we should definitely, yeah, uh-oh, and then I I heard a couple of comments.
Uh, sorry, I did want to add one, one more thing.
Okay.
You might think about the second story, though, whether you want to have two stories at fifteen feet and. Um, they look a lot better if they're set back when they're that close to the to the front uh property line.
Did you have a comment?
Um, I just, I would add that. From the design review perspective, we do encourage second stories to be subordinate to the first story. And ask for uh mass reducing techniques, which typically involve stepping the second story back.
Okay.
Um, but it's not specified to be setback of five feet or two feet or one foot or whatever, whatever that might be, so.
That's taken care of, is what you're saying?
It it it's taken care of to an extent in that we are always encouraging, we don't want flat wall planes, so it would be. Really unlikely that we would say, yes, put a a second story and just m- maintain the front wall plane. Um, but I think.
But we don't require that anywhere else, though, do we? We don't say that that.
It's just a mass redu, it's a mass reducing technique and it's something that's in the guidelines, but it's not something that's required by design review.
Got it, okay, um, okay. What I was going to ask was. Ju- just so I can clarify the the, you you were talking about the fact that there should have been a a sidewalk here and therefore the. The actual distance from the road to the front of the house is, are usually twenty feet. But the reason, but it, but but part of that twenty, I want to make sure I understand that correctly, but part of that twenty feet. Is actually public right away, so it's not a true twenty foot setback for private land. It's part of its right away, so if we changed it, I just want to make sure I I'm not, we're not doing something to kind of shoot ourselves here. So if we changed it and made it a consistent fifteen feet for the entire neighborhood. Is there a scenario where there's a house that's being built from the studs up? They can just suddenly move their house five feet forward? That wouldn't happen, would it? Because it still would be fifteen feet from the edge of the road.
It would be fifteen feet from their lot line.
From their lot line, okay, so it wouldn't take into account anything to do with the right of way. There's no scenario where if, because a lot of these um developments that have come, or the house, the. The remodels that have come in before the have um planning commission, what you find in practice, they just build them up from scratch, it looks like.
Mm hmm.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow them to then move the footprint any closer to the front of the road.
No.
No, right, because that's what I think, but I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
Seen, we haven't seen any examples where someone is at twenty feet in that neighborhood, so. Um, they're, because they've all been built to this fifteen foot setback, except for, like you said, some garages are, so I guess some garages might move forward potentially.
But by maybe three feet.
Yeah, and then and then there would be the potential for a second story to move forward or to be at fifteen feet if designer view wasn't required. For some reason.
Okay, but yet you said in other neighborhoods, they had. Already reduced the setback by variance, so this is working in other neighborhoods, I get, well. No, because then they'll do flat houses, they can do that, so maybe that's. So maybe that's something we write into it where we say the second story does have to be, has to be set back. I only. So not, not necessarily, right?
Depending on the site, well, all new second stories that, where there's not an existing second story, any brand new second story is subject to design review before the planning commission. However, a second story A D U would not be required to come before the planning commission. So that is a situation where you could end up with a flat wall plane because it's not subject to design review. You know, I think if, if it was design review before the planning commission and a new second story, you all would have the opportunity to say, we want you to employ additional mass reducing techniques and step, you know, per the single family design guidelines, step the second story back. But if it was an A D U that's not subject to any discretionary, you could end up with a two stories at 15 feet.
So maybe whenever you're looking at the tax amendment, that's something you couldn't think about incorporating.
Or you could limit it to first stories.
Right.
Fifty, first stories, 15 feet.
That's what I'm thinking, because I'm thinking of other neighborhoods. You mentioned Riviera where they have a, they have a smaller distance and there are houses there that have been newly built and are straight up and down. And I don't, I don't see, I don't recall seeing any houses like that in Heather Gardens. Almost all of them are set back on the second floor. So it would, it would be a, an unusual style in that neighborhood. Okay. So that answered my question about the distance. So I, then I do agree on making that change for the setback, especially as we've, as it's been working in other neighborhoods. On the parking. So we're going from four parking spaces just down to two, of which one's a small one that may not even fit a car or a large car, a large Marin car. But what else are they going to do in that neighborhood, right? What, what's the alternative? I mean, they're always going to come in and ask. So, so let me ask you this, I just want to ask staff this question. Could, what happens to a house that does have space for two side by side parking spaces? Would, can they say, oh, now we have extra space, we can use this for something other than parking and take away a parking space? See, that's, I don't want that to happen. I don't want a house that has plenty of room for parking, because there are houses in that neighborhood that have two side by side parking spaces and then you can put two behind, so effectively two tandems. And I would hate to lose parking where there already parking exists. So.
We, I, I do want to point out that the change, as, as it's written in the staff report, the recommendation would only apply to substandard lots.
Okay.
In Heather Gardens, not, so it, these outliers, these larger lots wouldn't receive this concession. No, if they aren't substandard, then they would still be subject to the parking requirements. However, I mean, even just doing a little bit of a look here, I can see that, yes, as, as you just stated, there are some substandard lots that do have three parking spaces. They've got one covered and then two in the driveway.
I just don't want this to be a backdoor into coming in and saying, okay, I want, and maybe that's, maybe we're saying that's okay. But it would seem to me that there is a, there's a lot of cars that are parked on the street in Heather Gardens because there's multiple homes with more than one car, right? And there's not enough parking. So in principle, I agree that if there's, they're going to, if someone's going to come in and ask for a variance because they really only have room for one car, because they have a tiny lot, that makes total sense. But if they happen to be one of those lots that fits three parking spaces, let's make them keep that, right? What do you think?
I would, I mean, if they're a substandard lot and they want to have a bigger house on that substandard lot.
They can go up, right?
But that's a different discussion. But if they want to give up a parking space, I mean, I'm just really curious how, how, maybe that's additional study. It's like, how many, how many have that additional width and how do they accomplish it?
I'm also wondering, and maybe this is a better question for Elise, but could it be written that, you know, this provision would not allow someone to take away existing parking?
Right.
If they exceed the two spaces in the neighborhood, this isn't saying that you can now go from three to two or from four to two. I don't know if that's possible, but I think another thing to weigh here is in a neighborhood where there is a lot of street parking that's being utilized. Is it, is it a bad thing if someone's reclaiming a nine by 18 square, nine by 18 portion of their yard and re-greening that? They're not going to put a structure there. The only instance I could see this happening is someone saying, okay, I want to tear out my, this, this one parking space of my driveway and reclaim some green space, which maybe there is a benefit to that.
Well, why, why couldn't they just expand into it or put an A D U into it?
Well, ADUs are not permitted in the, in front yards. And typically these, the parking is provided in the front yard. Some of the corner lots have it and like the side, but A D Us are, are only allowed in front yards with, I shouldn't say they're not allowed in front yards, they are allowed in front yards only when they can prove that there's nowhere else on a lot to situate an A D U, a statewide exempt A D U. So in, in Heather Gardens, being that most of these, all of these lots have rear yards or ability to build on to their existing homes. I, I don't see a case where we would approve an A D U in the front yard setback here.
So I think my thought is I like what Jackie suggested about this applying to substandard lots. If it's a very tiny, it's one of those small lots. And I guess we need to be clear about what we're defining as substandard, which would be seven, 7500 or less.
Yes.
Then, which is the majority, then yes, these could apply. That's what I'm thinking.
Not reducing the number of current spots.
So like, say you had a hypothetical project that came in where you had a substandard lot and they managed to squeeze in two parking stalls. And they wanted to remodel the house or tear it down and build a new one or whatever. And they wanted two tandem spots, one covered, one uncovered. So we'd be losing a spot, but it would be, it would put them in line with what their neighbors have.
A bigger house.
A bigger house with a little bit less parking. I mean, it seems hard to.
If they're in a substandard lot.
If they're in a smaller, one of the smaller lots, which I think a lot of them are, right? It seems like, like, you know, based on my experience on the commission, that we would probably have a hard time denying that because it's what their neighbors, it's a privilege that their neighbors enjoy.
Right.
So I mean, I'm, I guess I'm okay either way. Like if we, if, if we don't want to make them come bef, if we wanted, wanted to make an applicant in that situation come before the planning commission so that we could decide whether it was reasonable or not to reduce a parking spot or, you know, we wanted to retain some control over that, I guess, then that's one way to go about it. But I just, I guess I kind of struggle to see where, where we would exercise that power because then if the neighbors already enjoy that situation, then we, we might be hard pressed to deny them that same privilege, I guess.
That makes sense. I think in general, I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement, this is something we should look, we should put in, as a, so put into the code. So we'll have another shot at looking at this. I think. So I think we've given you some feedback, right? Enough feedback for you to come back with something and then maybe, and maybe the next time we have a meeting, there'll be four of us here instead of five. So we'll get like another opinion as well. But I, I think we're almost there. I think we're all sort of agreed that, and, and I'm looking at this now. I'm realizing almost all these slots are below 7500.
Almost all of them. And something I can bring back with the amendment to the study of, you know, how many, how many of these substandard lots do exceed two parking spaces?
That would be helpful.
So we could get a feel, you know, are we talking about a potential loss of two to five or potential loss of 20 to 25 spaces? I, looking at it on the overview, I think, I think that would be good for us to have that exact number. How many substandard lots exceed two parking spaces today?
I, I, yes. And how wide is the lot? Because that's critical too. If it's, it might be substandard, but a wide lot that has plenty of room for two parking spaces. But the more narrow lots make it more, make the parking look much more prominent. So maybe even have a little more, some more information, like photographs, these are the ones that have it. Do you, do you like this look or not?
Yeah, that would be helpful for me in any way. Yeah, thank you. And it sounds like we're all in agreement that we're not going to address the F A R just for this one neighborhood. This needs to be addressed citywide. So I think we all agree on that.
We have a bigger problem here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That closes the public portion. We've actually already addressed the business items. So I think we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
A second. Can we all just say, yeah?
Yes, you could all say, all in favor.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commentators.